Meeting of Planning today, Monday, July the 27th. I have a, is there any disclosure of conflict of interest? No, seeing none. I have a motion here moved by councillor Noble, seconded by councillor Wensink, that the council, the township in North Glengarry accepts the public meeting agenda of Monday, July the 27th, 2020. Are there any additions or deletions?
No.
No, we're good. Okay, then I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. I have a motion here moved by councillor Manley, seconded by councillor Noble, that the council, the township in North Glengarry accepts the minutes of the public meeting of Monday, March the 9th, 2020. Can I, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. So we'll move on to zoning amendments. We have three this evening. Starting with Craig McMillan and Joanne Pratt. Z042020. I believe that, Kasia, are you presenting them all separately or all at once? You'll do this one first.
As usual, one by one and then council will vote. So if I may start, deputy mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. So I will share the screen. Sarah hosts disabled participants' screen sharing. Sarah? Can you enable my screen, please, sharing? Okay, it's working now. Great. One second. Sorry, I have two screens with lots of issues. Let's try again. Your screen. Okay, there you go. Having a lot of screen issues the last few days. So there we are. So first zoning amendment. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Excellent. Alright, so Z042020, applicant. Not letting me expand the screen at all. Okay, alright. Sorry about that.
It's technology for you.
Yeah, it's been really joyful these last few days. Okay. Can we possibly take like a five or 10 minute pause and I'll try to solve this with Sarah or? Because I can't go on without my presentation.
Okay, or can you do it just verbally by chance?
There's a lot of images that I'd love you to see. It's really important.
Okay.
So I'll just take a pause, okay?
Okay, if it takes any longer than a few minutes, then we should just do it verbally.
It's not letting me share the screen. That's on the screen right now. Okay, oh, that is?
Yeah, the security alert. It's not me, right?
Go back.
Yeah, you're the security alert, Brenda.
Touching nothing. Karma, did I read that the August 10 meeting is live in person?
I'm not sure. I think they're planning for it.
Yes, yes, I do. Okay.
Sorry for the delay, those watching on Facebook Live. Just a few technical difficulties.
I'm going to exit the meeting and come back, so.
Did you see my YouTube video?
It was fantastic. You should go into acting, Jeff.
Yeah, exactly. Don't give up my day job.
What was it, Jeff? I didn't see it.
Oh, it's just.
The closure?
Yeah, we went up and did the thing on the sixth about reconstructing the sixth. We were doing some culverts in that era. Jamie asked me if I wanted to do that or whatever, so.
I saw it. I didn't know you were the star. Now I'm.
Oh, there you go.
How's it going?
Good. I think they finished all the culverts or whatever. So now it's just the next step will be to, when the crew comes in, which will probably be end of August, I think, so.
That's great. It's good they're getting going on that. Kasia, are you back up and running?
Yes, Sarah is trying to get the presentation, so should be two more minutes only.
It's interesting. Doug showed me the core samples they'd taken out of the sixth. And he said he was quite surprised, actually, at how much asphalt's there, so.
Alright, thank you, Sarah. And it was perceiving my PowerPoint as a security threat, so here we are. So, next slide, please. Zoning amendments are for 2020. So the owners are Craig McMillan and Joanne Pratt. The location, 21065 Lowheale Road in Ontario, Alexandria. The official plan designation is agricultural resource lands. The zoning is similar, general agriculture and floodplain. Next slide, please. So the subject lands are in front of you. Now, this is the entire piece of land, and please note, only a portion of the lands is proposed to be rezoned, as will be discussed in the following slide. Next slide, please. Okay, so the purpose of this zoning amendment application is to rezone a portion of the land zone agricultural to special exception agricultural in order to permit an event use with a maximum of 250 guests to the list of permitted users. And the proposed use would be housed within the existing accessory building and a temporary tent structure. Next slide, please. Okay, so in front of you, you will see the portion of the lands that is proposed to be rezoned. So basically, what is outlined in white here is the area that is proposed to be rezoned. You have the barn where the vineyard currently exists. And the event, most of the time, it would take place here. I have photos of the way it looks right now. The applicant has put gravel, basically a gravel pad to be able to put up temporary tents on there. Then you have the parking area, parking lot, and wood workshop, which is not part of the application at all, greywater system, the applicant's residence, well, septic, so on. And then, again, important to know, the overflow parking area, but I also have photos, so we'll see it again later. And the driveway leading up to the event venue and the singly detached home. Next slide, Sarah. Okay, so the existing uses on the lands, it's a 100 acre farm. 70 acres are dedicated to crops right now. As some of you might know, the applicants are running a business called Stonehouse Vineyard, which was licensed and authorized since 2018 through both AGCO and OCBO. They used open in 2019. Since then, applicants have been quite active hosting several small agritourism events, cycling, busters, yoga, painting sessions, vineyard, winery tours, and so on. Next slide. Discussion. So as I mentioned briefly before, the news will be housed in an outdoor tent, which the renters of the venue would bring to the property and assemble. So again, this is a large pad, which where the tents will be placed. Next slide, please. So some very important notes about this application. So there will be no overnight accommodation on the property for any events. The events all would end by 1:00 PM, which is the quiet enjoyment hour. And this respects the township of North Glengarry NoSense by law. This would be actually governed by an agreement with the renters for the event uses, an agreement that the noise must cease at 11:00 PM or before. The applicants have successfully applied to SDG Regional Centres programmes in the past in order to upgrade the laneway access to the farm for safety and install the greywater septic system. And in front of you, you see the existing barn or accessory building, which was also renovated and upgraded for the vineyard use. So the event would not take place inside the barn, but there might be wine tastings for smaller groups. Next slide, please. Okay, so the provincial policy statement, the use is consistent with the provincial policy statement. And just to summarize it for you, the province has produced a guideline called Guideline for Permitted Uses in Ontario's PRIMAG areas. Basically, it says that in prime agricultural areas, the lot size of up to 2%, so 2% of the farm parcel to a maximum of 1 hectare may be dedicated to an on-farm diversified use, such as a wedding event venue, for example. So just to put in perspective, this use consists only about 0.7% of the total farm or lot area or 0.21 hectares, so it's much less than what is permitted by the province. Next slide, please. And SDG County's official plan, the proposed use conforms to the official plan. So the lands are designated agricultural resource lands, as I mentioned, and the designation does permit on-farm diversified uses, as I described in the slide before. However, we acquired a zoning amendment, which we are discussing today. Next slide, please. So to discuss the township of North Glengarry zoning by law, the surrounding lands are zoned general ag in all directions, with some lands to the west that are zoned restricted agricultural, and these land uses are compatible with the proposed event use. Just to note, I have not received any negative comments. In fact, I received one positive comment today and one inquiry, just to clarify the use. So for parking, what is required for the scale of this use is 20 parking spaces, and the applicant is providing 20 parking spaces in front of the barn and an additional 100 in the field. Next slide, please. So these are the parking spaces. So 20 parking spaces in front of the barn. This is one view. This is the view of the other side. And this is another picture of the 20 parking spaces. Next slide. Okay, and this is the grassy field where the overflow parking will be located, up to 100 parking spaces. Next slide, please. The planning department recommends approval of the application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kasia. Sarah, do you want to ask, are there any comments?
Yes, so is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the application this evening? And if so, please turn on your video and your mic. A second time, does anyone wish to speak against or for the application this evening? And a third and final time, does anyone wish to speak for or against the application this evening? I don't see anyone.
Okay, seeing that there are no comments from the public, if it's okay with council members, we'll save, we'll have a discussion on these three amendments in the planning committee meeting. So if we could just move on to B, Darren Nelson, Z052020, please, Kasia.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, so we have another wedding venue here. Proposed, the owner is Darren Nelson. The lands are located at 188 Canyon Concession to an apple hill. The lands, however, are different here. They are zoned and designated rural district, so it's a little bit different. Next slide, please. So a very important picture. This is the entirety of the lands. As you will see, they are very large, 234 acres. A lot of separation to the neighbours. There is very few residents around, so just to compare to the chalet wedding venue from last year, it's very different. It's outside the urban settlement area, very few neighbours and no complaints. Just one letter in support for this application, very supportive letter, that is included in your package, planning package. Next slide, please. So the purpose of this zoning amendment is to rezone a portion of the land zone rule to rule exception, rule 16, to add an event use with a maximum of 200 guests and an outdoor market use with a maximum of 515 vendors to the list of permitted users. And the proposed zoning amendment would be, will include an addition of a permanent building for both the proposed uses. Next slide. Discussion. So as I mentioned, wedding events are proposed to take place within a new proposed building with a ground floor area of approximately 6,000 square feet on the lands, and within a portion of the single detached dwelling on the property, which is very, very large, and I have pictures of that. The proposed new building will be adapted to be accessible for the public and will comply with the Ontario Building Code. It will also be subject to site plan control for all site development elements. Food would be fully catered to the property. No food preparation would take place on the property. And applicants actually mentioned they are planning to hire local caterers as well as entertainers for the events. And a very interesting element, the applicant is willing and happy to install a new septic system, which will be connected to permanent washroom facilities in the proposed event building. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, this is the approximate location for the 6,000 square feet building where the events would take place, as well as the proposed market use and the general location for the septic system. This is a wetland zone, both of these. Provincially evaluated wetlands and other wetlands, they are well separated from the proposed building. So there is about 40 metres from the wetland boundary, and septic system is set back even further, about at least 100 metres. Next slide, please. Okay, so as I mentioned, part of the existing dwelling will be dedicated to the event venue use, but only a portion. So it's mostly the outdoor terrace here and a small portion of the upstairs of the home. It's really beautiful, and this is where the groom and bridal party would be getting ready for the events. So only for the beginning portion of the event, and then the guests might also spend some time here during the events, just. Next slide, please. So as you've seen on the first slide, the property is very large, 234 acres of land. So the use will be very well separated from adjacent properties, and any noise will be buffered by the existing woodlands on the lands. And wedding events are planned to end by midnight. Now, for the second proposed use, a now-dorm market with a maximum of 15 vendors, it will be located within the new building as well. And the outdoor market would include local farmers' products. The applicants were also inspired by European-style Christmas markets. So that would be proposed use for the winter market. And there are no anticipated negative impacts for these proposed uses. Next slide, please. So the provincial policy statement, the both the uses are consistent with the PPS 2020. Similarly, as I explained, even though the lands are not designated agriculture, they are comprised of PRIMAG lands according to the Canada Land Inventory Soil Classification. So I had to do the same kind of analysis. So if the lands are up only or less than 2% of the total area, the use is permitted by the province. So in this case, the proposed use is only 0.2%, approximately 0.24 hectares. So it's way under the permitted by the province. Next slide, please. SDG County's official plan, the use conforms to the official plan. The lands are designated rural district. The designation permits on-farm diversified uses, but requires a zoning amendment. Next slide, please. Okay, township of North Glengarry zoning by law. Now, because this zoning amendment is a bit different from the other one in that permanent structure, a building and a septic tank is being proposed, it will be subject to site plan control if approved. This will help ensure that the new use fits with the rural character of the area and ensures it's compatible with the surrounding rural and residential uses. So the site plan would address things like entrances, parking, pedestrian pathways, emergency vehicle access, lighting, walkways and structure adequacy, site grading, fencing, landscaping, drainage, septic system capacity and evaluation, outdoor storage, visual noise screening, also subject to this. No sense by law. Other items that will need to be addressed with a site plan process and the building permit process will pertain to the building code, such as site servicing, emergency vehicle access, evaluation, design of building for assembly and occupancy. Next slide, please. So for parking, the parking requirements that have been calculated for this application is a total of 70 parking spaces. Next slide, please. So there is two locations for the parking. So the first location is here along the laneway. About 20 parking spaces will be located here. Next slide. And the second parking is north of the existing dwelling, and here would be the remaining 50 parking spaces. Next slide. So noted, negative impacts are anticipated for the proposed uses. As I mentioned, site plan approval process would ensure that servicing is adequate and the rural character is maintained. Significant traffic impacts on surrounding rural network or land uses are not anticipated. The applicants mentioned they will be likely busing their guests from the event or after the event to hotels in North Glengarry and/or Cornwall to manage the traffic. Next slide. The planning department recommends approval of application Z052020. Thank you.
Thank you, Kasia. Sarah, do you want to ask if there are any comments?
Sure. Does anyone wish to speak in favour or against the application this evening?
Go ahead.
So I just had some questions, and I think Darren's on the call, so maybe he's able to answer these. So we're the neighbours, 18969, I believe, is the address. So this is really great. I think this is a great development, a really good idea. I see that there is the intent to do a site plan control, and I know, Kasia?
Kasia? Kasia?
Kasia, you've talked about how there's not an impact of the proposal. My guess is that you're talking about there's not really an impact on Darren's land, which I think he's done an amazing job with this, and I think it's a really good idea. Is there any way to make sure that we're involved in the site plan control? Because I think the parking is towards 18969, the septic is towards that direction. So I just want to make sure that that's not going to have an impact on the neighbouring property as well, if that's at all possible. We haven't really had a chance to talk to Darren about it, so we could do that, or like, I don't know. I don't know the Glengarry procedure, so if you could give us some help about that. Fundamentally, I think, yeah, I think Cantia would be able to answer that too, but I think we think that this is a really great idea.
So just to put in context, are you located in which direction from there in north-south? Okay, I see. So to answer your question, the public is involved in the site plan control process here at North Glengarry. So we would definitely have opportunities to comment and.
That's great. And I'm sure he's got everything under control, because I think this would be something that would be really good for, you know, our potential, you know, looking at what he's doing and seeing how we can support what he's trying to do there. So that would be great. No food preparation, the 40 metres, just the question if that's really close to the boundary between the two properties, the parking. He seems that that seems to be really well done. And then the other question was just the Canyon concession with the increased traffic, just to say it's a dirt road. So it has a tendency to get churned up a lot, so that would be on the, I guess, on the on Glengarry, right, to try to make sure that that's maintained for this kind of traffic, which I, you know, if you're busing, it's not going to be a big issue, so. Yeah, I don't know if Darren has any comments or if he's comfortable with that, or.
Hey, I can go on. Let's see here. Hey, guys.
Hi, Darren.
Hi. Thanks for the questions. In terms of the, in terms of the site plan work, I guess we just participate however the county does it. I'm new to this process in North Glengarry, so yeah, be happy to work with you and take your inputs. And I think a lot of the areas specifically around parking and septic are just proposed. I think we still need to get the right engineering done in terms of where all of this is going to go. So happy to, you know, to take inputs on that as well.
That's great.
And it'd be nice if the county wouldn't pave the concession.
No, we don't want to pave. We need it maintained.
With traffic calming measures.
Yeah, yeah, right. Exactly. Yeah.
Our Public Works Department looks after the roads very well, generally speaking, so I think you'll probably be happy with the ongoing upkeep. Sarah, do you want to ask another time?
Sure. Does anyone wish to speak in favour or against the application? And a third and final time, does anyone else wish to speak in favour or against the application?
Okay, thank you, Sarah. As I said earlier, Heidi and Darren, council will be commenting on this in our subsequent meeting after this one. So we will move on to see Sharon John's owner, Mark and Isabella Latre, applicant Z062020. Go ahead, Kasia.
Z062020. So this amendment does not pertain to wedding venues or events. Different. It is located at 30 Main Street South in Maxwell. The lands are zoned institutional, and they are designated the residential district in the official plan. Next slide, please. Okay, so in front of you have a high-level photo of the subject lands. It is a church that has been out of use for about a year. Next slide, please. So the purpose of the application is to rezone the subject lands from institutional to institutional special exception IN2 to permit a residential dwelling as the main use on the lands. So to be more detailed, the residential dwelling is permitted on, in the current zoning, but as an accessory or a secondary use. So here we're just trying to make it the main use, basically. So for discussion, the existing church is proposed to be converted to a dwelling. There will be no changes to the outside building envelope, facade or the interior structure. The applicant will be required to apply for a change of use building permit to be in compliance with the Ontario Building Code. Next slide, please. The provincial policy statement, the proven, the application is compliant with the provincial policy statement. It is a simple change of use, and it is fully permitted in the SDG official plan. Therefore, it is compliant. Next slide, please. As DG County's official plan, so the subject lands, as I mentioned, are designated residential district. This designation permits a range of uses, including full range of low, medium and high-density housing. So the use is conforming to the official plan. Next slide. So a little bit of a background, the church trustee is informed that the church attendance on Maxwell United Church has declined dramatically since 1964. Before they stopped worshiping in the church, there were less than 10 active church members, and they could no longer justify keeping it open. The congregation first merged with the United Church in Moose Creek, and even then, it wasn't enough to ensure the livelihood of the church. Before the pandemic, they had merged further with other faiths in the village of Maxwell, Catholics, Protestants and so on, to attend what they called a community acute medical church. Given the severely declining attendance at the church and the proposed conversion of the church to a residential dwelling constitutes good planning use, especially given that we're not changing the facade or anything at all. It will remain as it is. It will be maintained and upkept as it is. It is also compatible with the adjacent land uses and is desirable for the area. So the surrounding area is fully residential. And the change of use to a dwelling will ensure the church is maintained and will prevent the further deterioration of the structure. Next slide. The planning department recommends the approval of this application Z062020. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kasia. Sarah, go ahead.
Would anyone like to speak in favor or against this application this evening? A second time, would anyone like to speak in favor or against the application this evening? And a third and final time, would anyone like to speak in favor or against the application this evening? The one, Deputy Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Sarah. So we will, there's no old business, new business, no motion. So we will adjourn this meeting and move on to, on to the planning meeting. So I have a motion here moved by councillor Wensing, seconded by councillor Manley, that there be no further business to discuss. The public meeting was adjourned at 7:04. All in favor of the motion? Carried, thank you. Okay, we'll get right into the planning committee meeting for Monday, July the 27th, 2020. Is there any disclosure of any pecuniary interest? Seeing none. Will accept the agenda. I have a motion moved by councillor Noble, seconded by councillor Wensing, that the council, the township of North Glengarry accepts the planning committee meeting agenda of Monday, July the 27th, 2020. Are there any additions or deletions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Carried, thank you. Ratify the minutes. I have a motion here moved by councillor Noble, seconded by councillor Manley, that the council, the township of North Glengarry accepts the minutes of the planning committee meeting of Monday, June the 8th, 2020. Are there any comments or questions on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Zoning amendments. So far, we're, these are the, we're back to the same three zoning amendments. Kasia, do you just want to do something brief? And then I'll, I'll open it up to council for questions and comments.
So I presented all the details. Council is welcome to ask any questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments on zoning amendment A, Craig McMillan and Joanne Pratt, Z042020? Okay.
Carmen, just a quick.
Yes?
So Cash, I just wanted to double check. There's really nothing changed as far as a building or anything. Whoever's coming in, they're taking their own tents, and basically they're renting the space.
Exactly, that's right. That summarizes, there is nothing, no new construction proposed.
Thanks.
Now, Kasia, this will then go to a regular, a subsequent regular council meeting, right?
Correct.
Okay, not, not, not tonight's.
In two weeks.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on this application? Okay, seeing, oh, I forgot to put this on the table. Moved by my, moved by councillor Noble, seconded by councillor Manley, that the planning committee recommend approval of zoning amendment Z042020 and that the application be forwarded to the council, the township of North Glengarry for further consideration and approval. So if there are no comments, all in favor of the motion? Brenda? Okay, that carried. Okay, so we're on to zoning amendment. Pardon me? Did I miss you, Brenda?
No, as long as I'm active, as long as I'm here, you can see me.
Okay. And you voted for that motion? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have Darren Nelson, Z052020. I'll put the motion on the table. Moved by councillor Manley, seconded by councillor Wensing, that the planning committee recommend approval of zoning amendment Z052020 and that the application be forwarded to council of the township of North Glengarry for further consideration and approval. Comments, questions? And yes, councillor Wensing?
Not a question, just a comment. I think it's wonderful to see other venues in our local community, especially with COVID. The more options to shop locally, the better. So I'm really happy to see this plan and definitely support it.
Thank you, councillor Noble.
I just had two questions, Kasia. Thank you for just confirming at the beginning that although it's a similar idea, we don't have a lot of the same issues that we did with last year's. I just wanted to make sure the Christmas market or the market, whatever it becomes, that doesn't have to be retail or commercial, that's not another zoning?
No, it does not, does not in this case.
Perfect. And then I don't want to be accused of being a hypocrite. So I noticed that a lot of the things, we're going to have to be where there will be trees removed. We're not tacking a lot of trees, I hope.
Relatively.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Councillor Manley, do you have anything?
No, nothing really. Just, I think it's a great, great initiative. And I drove by your property the other day, and you're, you're well-isolated there. So I don't think we're going to have any problems, and I wish you all the luck with your, your proposal as it moves forward.
Thank you. And I, I agree. I think it's an excellent venture. I too drove by it, and it's, it's a good spot for it. Just one question, Kasia, if I may. The, I see that the proposed closing downtime is, is from midnight. And, and of course, our nuisance bylaw states 11:00 PM. I, I don't expect that there would be excessive noise bothering the neighbors. But if, if, if there was excessive noise in between 11:00 and 12:00, and would our, do we need to put a sort of a condition on this, on this zoning amendment in order to, to sort of address that? Or would the nuisance bylaw just kick in?
So this concern would be addressed at the site plan stage. There could be conditions placed in the site plan control for certain buffering measures and sound insulation. But I would not include it at this stage.
Okay, perfect, excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, so old business, new business, no motion. So, okay, I went, forgot to put this one on the, hang on a second. Did I forget? I'm mixing up my motions. So, oh yes, I've already put this one on the table, sorry. So a motion, a vote on the motion then, all in favor? Carried, thank you. And then the last one, I'll put the motion on the table. Moved by Joanne Wensing, seconded by councillor Manley, that the planning committee recommend approval of zoning amendment Z062020 and that the application be forwarded to the council, the township of North Glengarry for further consideration and approval. So this is the United Church in Maxwell, Z062020. Are there any questions or comments on this application? Yes, councillor Manley?
Just, just I want, just one quick question, just wondering. So I, the way I looked, when we looked at the package, it looked like it was going to be a sort of a single-family type unit. Is it possible to, to also have other, like, could it be split off? And you could have other apartments in there or that kind of thing? Does, does this zoning allow for that or?
No, that would not be permitted under this zoning application. He will need to go through another amendment for that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Also, Wensing?
I'm just happy that there will be something done with the building to take care of it. It is on Main Street, and it's unfortunate to see another church close. However, it's a very good plan, and I'm definitely in support of it.
Thank you, Brenda. Councillor Noble, do you have anything?
Um, I just know that, yeah, it's a sad trend, but usually, I don't, I don't want to say it off the cuff like that. But usually, they turn out even better than they were before. That's what happened to my mom's United Church. It's, it looks amazing. So congratulations for taking this on.
Thank you, yes, I, I agree. And the, the new owners of this property are going to probably officially have the largest living room in the world, I think.
The best acoustics.
And good acoustics. Okay, so we've all heard the motion, all in favor? Carried, thank you very much. So being that there's no further business to discuss, the motion is moved by councillor Manley and seconded by councillor Noble, that the planning committee meeting was adjourned at 7:13. All in favor? Thank you, carried. Okay, so now we will move, we're behind schedule. We'll move directly into our regular council meeting. So, good evening of the public. And welcome to our regular council meeting of Monday, July the 27th, 2020. Mayor McDonald is away on vacation, as is councillor Manley. So I will. I'm sorry, sorry. Massey. It's okay, Jeff, you're not invisible. I see you there. Sorry about that. So I'll call this meeting to order. Are there any declarations of any pecuniary interest? Seeing none, acceptance of the agenda. I have a motion here moved by councillor Noble, seconded by councillor Wensing, that the council, the township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda of the regular meeting of council on Monday, July the 27th, 2020. Are there any additions or deletions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Thank you, carried. Adoption of previous minutes. We have a motion moved by councillor Wensing, seconded by councillor Manley, that the minutes of the following meetings be adopted as circulated, regular meeting of council, July the 13th, 2020, and committee of the whole meeting, July 22nd, 2020. Are there any comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Thank you, carried. Okay, we have no delegations. Onto staff reports. CEO Clerk's Department, a bylaw 342020, which is mandatory use of masks policy. I have a motion here moved by councillor Wensing, seconded by councillor Noble, that the council, the township of North Glengarry receives staff report number AD 202015, and that the council, the township of North Glengarry approves the mandatory use of masks policy and that council adopt bylaw 342020, being a bylaw to adopt a use, adopt a mandatory use of masks policy, and that bylaw 342020 be read first, second and third time and enacted in open council this 27th day of July 2020. So go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So as councils aware, on July 7th, the EUHU made masks mandatory in all enclosed public spaces. Staff were in receipt of a letter from the EUHU last week requiring us to pass a policy. So many businesses would have done that independently, but because we're governed by the municipal law, we must do that in a formal bylaw. So council is seeing that this evening. It's the standard mask policy provided by the EUHU. And the county of SCG has also adopted it for their building as well. I can certainly report that since we've been open since, since last Monday, we've had 100% compliance with people coming in the office, so we're very happy with that. We have spoken to staff about how to address people who have come in without a mask, but we haven't had to use that yet. So we're, we're very happy with our residents that are coming in. So we're just having, hoping that council will adopt a policy this evening to make it official.
And thank you, Sarah. Do we have any comments or questions from council members? It's pretty straightforward. Okay, then I'll, I'll call for a vote on the motion, all in favor of the motion? Thank you, carried. Okay, Treasury Department, B, penalty forgiveness. I have a motion here moved by councillor Manley, seconded by councillor Wensing, that the council, the township of North Glengarry receives staff report number TR 202024, and that the council, the township of North Glengarry approves resuming the normal collection and penalty process for both taxation and waterworks arrears. Sarah? Oh no, sorry, not Sarah, Kim. Kimberly, sorry.
I mean, hi. During pandemic, township of North Glengarry has forgiven penalties and interest for April, May, June and July. There were also no water shut-offs during that period of time. We are now entering stage three, and more and more businesses are opening. So it's recommended that the township resumes normal practice of collection and penalty process for tax, sorry, taxation and waterworks arrears. Basically, penalty and interest charges resume at about $24,000 a month for taxes and about $1,500 per month for water arrears.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Questions, comments? I, I just have one quick question. Are there, are there many accounting arrears at this point, Kim?
Yes, there are. Taxation, not so bad, because people have been on the pre-offered payment plan, and they continue to do so. Because even if you stop that in three to four months, you're going to owe more. So, you know, they've been really quite good about that. Water is becoming an issue because they're, they're two months behind in billing. So some of our patrons now owe for actually six months. patrons now owe for actually six months.
So it's, so in some cases, it's really a good idea to get these payments back and on track, because otherwise it'll get worse.
Absolutely, and we're entering stage three and businesses are trying to get back to normal, so we, we're trying to get back to normal. We've got the township office open and uh, I, I'd like to see business resume as it used to be.
Okay. Thank you, council, council members. Um, seeing no comments and no questions, then I'll ask for a vote on the motion, all in favor? Carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Okay, Public Works Department, C waste collection contract negotiation. I have a motion moved by councillor Noble, seconded by councillor Manley. The council receive a report PW twenty twenty twenty, Public Works Waste Collection Contract Negotiation, and further the council approve an extension to the waste collection contract to GRS sanitation on an annual price increase of one point five percent over the current contract price. And third, and, and further, that council approve a three-year contract extension from August first, twenty twenty, to July thirty first, twenty twenty three, to be confirmed and renewed each year with the possibility of extending based on circumstances at the time. And further, that council direct staff to incorporate stipulations into the contract renewal that are flexible to accommodate the regional waste management study and the transition to full producer responsibility for the blue box. And further, the council delegate the authority to execute finalized contract to the chief administrative officer and mayor. Welcome, Doug.
Good evening, Madam Chair, good evening, council. Um, thank you. Madam Chair, at the last committee of the whole meeting, you had received a report concerning the solid waste contract. Uh, basically, it had indicated uh, one point seven five percent increase uh year over year for two-year extension. Members of council directed that I return to negotiations with uh GRS to obtain one point five percent. So Madam Chair, uh, the contractor is willing to accept one point five percent um for year one. So that's so that's slightly different than what's outlined in your contract. So he's willing to accept one point five percent for year one. He would like a three-year contract extension. Um, he's willing to accept a ninety-day uh oath clause, if you will, uh, so that if things change with municipality, we, we give ninety days notice. He has requested that he also have a ninety-day notice. I'm not too sure why he would want to cancel the contract. It seems reasonable with me if he wants ninety days to, to cancel the contract, we could uh initiate a, a new request for proposal. He has also requested that after year one, um, he would receive um cost of living. So, Madam Chair, um that is problematic in what I would say year two. So year one, um, this year, uh, the cost of living is essentially zero or maybe even a negative number. And assuming the economy recovers, year two, that number may be actually more than two or three percent. Um, and so uh, I would suggest that you um not consider that. I would suggest that you stick with one point five percent. Um, or if, if you are flexible, maybe up to one point seven five percent for year two and three. So I guess I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is he's willing to accept one point five percent for year one. He's asked for cost of living for year two or year three. Um, a minimum of one point five percent or whatever it is.
Okay, thank you, councillor Winston, because I saw you had your hand up.
Yes, so I think it's reasonable that the contractor wants to know about ninety days to cancel because I imagine there would be some significant staffing changes for his business. I'm glad to see in Doug's report that the impact of these increases was translated into dollar amounts, so we could make a more informed decision. I still support the increase. I think definitely one point five is reasonable and I would support the increase to one point seven five percent because if this contractor has staffing issues, we're not aware of it because our garbage still gets picked up week after week all year round. And I just think they do a great job. And it's nice to know that this is one service we really don't have to worry about when we renew the contract with this company. That's the way I feel.
Thank you, councillor Wensink. Councillor Noble or councillor Manley, okay, councillor Manley?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with councillor Winston on this. I, I think we could uh, go with the one point five for, for this year, like they've, they've said, and uh one point five or, or the co- cost of living up to a maximum of one point seven five uh for years two and three. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything, councillor Noble?
I'm unstable, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, no, I just, I read it and I understood that it was one point five each year for the three years. So, so sorry, I misunderstood that, then um yeah, as long as there was a max on the cost of living, because I, I I don't know how long this is going to go on. So I don't say it'll stay at zero or negative, but you just don't want it to jump for any reason, so. But no, I'm, I don't get too many complaints and uh I understand they've been very good to keep the same company.
Okay, thank you. I, I, just a quick question, Doug. So what if the cost of living is um identified as one point five uh in twenty twenty one? Does that mean that they'll, they'll get the, whatever is posted?
Um, so through you, Madam Chair, yes, um, it would be a minimum of one point five percent, and then
Yes.
we could, for example, put a cap on that increase as, as councillor Wensink and councillor Manley had suggested, and if that cap is one point seven five or maybe even two, um, maybe that's a reasonable approach.
Well, I, because I have a question about, because I know each year at some point in time, it's usually late winter that, isn't it, uh, the cost of living is, is posted? When, when is that usually? Sarah, do you know?
Um, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So the cost of living is actually available all year round. Um, so typically, municipalities or companies will pick one um month to base it on. So for, often for budgeting purposes, they'll use August, September, just as a baseline year over year, and they don't normally change uh the time of year they do that, but um a lot of companies use November, for instance. So we would just want to pick a, a month to use um so that, because it does fluctuate uh based on seasons, so um, but it does it year over year comparison of, of the year, no matter what month it is. So it's reflective at the time.
Okay, so then we'd be safe if we sort of set a minimum of one point five and a but, I mean, or, or we could put in the contract that whatever the going rate of cost of living is on, on the uh, as of, as of January first of, of each year. I don't know, is there, does, does that make more sense, or does it just make sense to go with a minute and a max? Councillor Wensink?
Well, I agree with what Doug had explained about going with a minimum and a maximum, because now if it goes up to three percent, you're actually doubling the increase that we're talking about. So then it, it is a significant amount of an increase.
Yes, Sarah?
Um, also for budgeting purposes, um, to have a, a maximum is easier for the treasurer to budget, so she can uh know that it won't go any higher than two percent. Otherwise, it can fluctuate quite a bit. As councillor Wensink had said, it does make quite an impact um to go up to the, the three percent or, or higher, depending on what's happening with the economy.
Okay, thank you. All right, so council members, are you good with one point five, one seven five at the, at the, at the top? Yes? Okay, so then that's what Doug had. That's what's in your report, Doug. So then, uh, if everyone's okay for that, I'll, I'll ask for a vote on the motion then, because I, I had read out the motion already. Are you good? Take a vote then, all in favor? Carried, thank you very much. So we have uh D award tender replacement of Creek Road Bridge, Doug. Thank you.
Okay, Madam, Madam Chair, did you want to read out the um
Okay.
The motion?
I will do that. Moved by councillor Wensink and seconded by councillor Noble, that the council approve the award of tender twenty BR twenty six for the replacement of the Creek Road Bridge to Clearview Structures Inc. Being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder in the amount of one million six hundred ninety-eight, two hundred and seventy-one thousand plus HST, and further, that council approved the allocation of a hundred and seventy thousand as a ten percent contingency allowance for the project to address unforeseen or additional work related to the project. And further, the council approve an additional ninety-two thousand and fifty to the existing BT engineering contract as an allowance for additional engineering services and allowance of twenty thousand dollars for materials testing. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Doug.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as I had reported at the committee of the whole meeting, uh, the tender for this uh bridge closed on July twenty-third. Um, there were uh several bidders. Um, we received those bids and we publicly opened them. The low bidder was Clearview Structures with a total bid price of one million six ninety-eight, two seventy-one plus HST, uh, and the details of that bid are, are included in your um council agenda package. Uh, the bids were reviewed by our consultant. Each bidder had minor arithmetic errors in, in their, in their bid, um, but it didn't substantially affect uh the bids, nor did it change uh the relativity of it. Um, so while uh this bid is, or the low bid is in fact higher than the construction estimate um provided by the consultants, it is uh all bids were about the same, not the same, but in the ballpark of being the same, and so uh, we think the bids are valid and reflect market price. So, um, Madam Chair, we're also asking for a um contingency allowance of ten percent. Within the contract, there is already a small contingency allowance. I think I, it's forty thousand or something like that. So that's a contingency that's already built into the contract. We are asking for an additional ten percent for things that might come up. Uh, so for example, if you wanted to salvage that um, uh, the railing, if it's five thousand dollars or something, that would come out of that ten percent. As part of the design, the consultant has already incurred expenses related to surveying. Um, but uh, we also want him or the consultant to undertake contract administration and inspection services. Um, and we're also uh asking for a twenty thousand dollar material testing allowance to take asphalt samples, concrete samples. Compaction samples, those types of things. So the total of those additional uh contract administration and material allowance is ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and forty. Uh, and the, those small design issues related to legal survey amount to twelve thousand three hundred. So we are recommending this, um, the main part being the award of the contract at uh one million six hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, or two hundred and seventy-one plus HST, and all of those costs combined, you're still under your total identified budget for this part.
Excellent, thank you, Doug. Comments, questions? Uh, councillor Manley?
Doug, have we, have we used this, this company before for, for bridges? Do you know?
So, Madam Chair, I don't know if you, i.e. the township, have used this company, but both myself and our consultant have, have worked with this company in the past. They're a very reputable contractor. Uh, that's what I mean by responsive and responsible. So not only did they meet the requirements of the tender, uh, they're also a, a good contractor that we are familiar with.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Noble?
Um, I just wanted to double check, Doug, um, what is there any of this money that's coming out of our end? I know you mentioned our budget that we had, and of course, we're getting a grant for this. What would be beyond the hook for?
So through you, Madam Chair, um, I believe that uh between the federal and provincial government, the total grant amount is eighty-three percent of the cost. Um, I don't have my calculator with me, so I can't calculate what eighty-three percent is. Um, but we had also identified in the budget our share of the total cost, and so our seventeen percent share will be slightly less than what we had budgeted. I'm not too sure if the, if the treasurer wants to add anything to that.
And in the meantime, my second question is the most exciting one. When's the start date?
Um, okay, so through you, Madam Chair, um, I suspect that the count, the, that sometime next week or perhaps the week after, uh, there will be a, an initial meeting with the contractor and he would take probably two, two weeks to start. So I suspect that the start you probably won't be on site until about August seventeenth.
And then same, we can do the same thing, maybe starring uh Jeff Manley, but we can do the same sort of deal when we talk about, okay, we're gonna have to close the road soon, or, or you'll see traffic, or.
You, you just want to film a video on YouTube, Brenda?
Clickbait.
Councillor Wensink, do you have anything on this subject?
No, it sounds like a good plan, and I think Brenda would do a fabulous YouTube about it.
Okay, well, if there are no further questions or comments, um, I will call a vote on the motion, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Doug, yeah. Okay, so uh, we don't have any unfinished business, the consent agenda. Um, I have a motion here moved by councillor Noble and seconded by councillor Wensink uh, that the council, the township of North Glengarry receives the items from the consent agenda for information purposes only. All in favor of the motion? Carried, thank you. Um, no new business, we will be going into closed session. It means, so do, Sarah, do, do I, uh, do I read out this motion right away, Sarah, for to go into closed session?
Um, yes, you can read it out, Deputy Mayor, and then we will uh adjourn this meeting, and you can click on the other link to go in camera.
I see, okay. All right. And I have a motion moved by councillor Manley, seconded by councillor Noble, to proceed in closed session. An identifiable individual, as this matter deals with personal matters about an identifiable, identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, they may be discussed in closed session under sections two, three, nine, two B of the Ontario Municipal Act, and adopt the minutes of the municipal council closed session meeting of July the thirteenth, twenty twenty. So I don't have any motion to close the meeting, I don't have any uh resolution to close the meeting.
Um, so you just take a vote on that, Deputy Mayor, and then we will adjourn this meeting, so it will, everyone will leave this meeting, and then council will read
Okay.
go on to the new meeting.
Yeah, very good. Okay, then I'll take a vote on the motion, all in favor? Good. Okay, carried, thank you very much. So that's the close of this meeting, and then we will go in camera. So this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you.